Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice posted on the municipal Bolton Board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Roll call, Marie.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully.
Here.
Chairman Avaloni.
Here. Okay. I feel like I'd be derelict without mentioning first it's Russell Lewis's birthday. Happy birthday, Russell.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
How many centuries do we have?
Fifty-eight, ma'am. So, um, I don't have the resolution, but... First up is an executive session. I'll read the resolution into the minutes. Whereas NJAS 2:4-12, the Open Public Meetings Act, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting of the board in certain circumstances, and whereas the board hereby moves to close the public hearing and convene enclosed executive session in order to discuss the appeal of 503 Eighth Avenue LLC currently pending in the Superior Court of New Jersey pursuant to NJAS 2:4-12B7, which is permitted by the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. And whereas it is anticipated at this time that the above matter will be made public at the conclusion of the litigation, including any appeals. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment that it hereby close the public portion of this meeting in order to convene in private executive session for the reasons set forth above. I make a motion to adopt the resolution to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Wendy Glassman.
Yes.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully.
Yes.
Chairman Christopher Avaloni.
Yes. So, executive session. Mr. Beekman, would you please join us?
I would.
I'll make a motion to go back into regular session after the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, aye.
Alrighty. We just have some housekeeping issues. Oh.
No, no worries. Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully.
Here.
Chairman Christopher Avaloni.
Here. All right. We just have some housekeeping issues before we get to the application. How do we do this? Do we do this one at a time?
Yeah, but you can do voice all in favor because this is just a memorialization of what you did formally at that meeting.
That's what I thought. Okay.
So you can go through them real quick.
Okay. So I make a motion to adopt the resolution for the zoning board attorney for 2024.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Rig.
I'm not doing roll call.
No, all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, aye. Thank you.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution for the zoning board planner CCH 2024.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
Aye, aye.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution for the zoning board secretary for 2024, Maria Rodriguez.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution for the zoning board recording entity for 2024, AP-TV.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution for the zoning board conflict attorney for 2024, the Beekman Attorney Firm.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none.
All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to adopt the resolution for the zoning board interim board engineer for 2024, Insight.
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, aye.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution for the zoning board conflict planners, TNM, for 2024.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Matter of case.
So I think that concludes our housekeeping issues. So we're ready for 211 Dewitt Avenue, Monmouth Investment Partners. Welcome back. It's been a long time.
The last time you asked me to give you a summary, would you like me to do that again?
I would appreciate that, Mr. Cromer.
Okay. This is an application to build a home on an undersized lot. The last times we were here, I think the board was concerned about the size of the home, so we went back to the drawing board and made the home smaller. We reduced the footprint. We reduced the number of bedrooms, and we enlarged the backyard. So this smaller house fits this property, and we ask at the end of the application that the board approve it. We are going to begin our presentation with the architect, who is setting up right now. And Mr. Feldman, would you come forward?
You want to swear in?
Please, where your answer. Do you solemnly swear affirm your testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And then please state your name for the record and spell it.
David Feldman, Ephesian Frank, ELD MAN.
You appeared already on this application at the very beginning back at all this, correct?
I have.
So you're already pre-qualified. Your credentials are in, so there'd be no need to requalify you. You're... The license is still current in the state of New Jersey?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Please proceed, Mr. Feldman.
So, the first meeting that we appeared before you, we had a home that was... That consisted of four bedrooms and a rear setback that was approximately six feet from the rear property line. After that meeting and hearing the board's comments, what we did was we reduced the depth of the house from roughly 52 feet down to 48, I believe. So we picked up an additional four feet to the rear and on the left side of the property, and we picked up an additional six feet on the right side of the property. When I go through the plan, you'll see there's a job in the back of the building where previously it was flush. In addition to that, we reduced the number of bedrooms. Previously, we had three bed... Four bedrooms, and that was a proposal that home that has three bedrooms. So, in terms of the aesthetics and the look of the home, similar to what we previously represented initially, feeling that it still fits the character of the neighborhood.
Just a quick question. Could you swear in?
Yes.
Professionals?
Do you solemnly swear affirm your testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Millian, board planner.
Donna Valon, board engineer. Thank you.
Donna, with the reduction in size of the house, did this eliminate any of the variances that were required?
Um, I want to say no.
Okay.
I'm just... So, your question. I believe they're all the same. Just the degree to which has changed. So like, the building coverage got reduced, but they still need building coverage.
Right.
They still need the side yards. They still need the front yard.
So there was no elimination of any of the variances?
And they're still... Yeah. And then with the exceptions, they still have the garage offset and the width of the building is still deficient. So, yeah, it's just, you know, to what extent.
So it's just a degree, percentage less? Okay. Thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Feldman.
So, on the first floor, where the original home went straight across, giving us roughly a six-foot offset to the rear property. And now the core rear is a job to the rear. The overall home length is 416, which is now giving us roughly 10 feet to the property line on the left, and with the offset into the rest of the area, enough, about 12 feet on the right side. The second floor, what we did was we reduced it by the previously stated four bedroom, we went down to one, two, three bedrooms. And because this is a slab-on-bride, we created a habitable attic.
Excuse me, Mr. Feld. That's going to be A4 or 5?
That's the... Seven, seven.
Uh huh. We're going to find out, right? I need to know what we can identify.
Oh, five, seven. We would be at A5.
Okay. And tell us what it is before... Is that a plan you prepared?
Sure. A5 is a plan that we prepared consisting of two sheets. A1 is the elevation sheet. A2 is the... Represents the floor plans.
What's the date on that?
The date on these is 9/28/23.
The... It's the revision date.
Yeah, the revised date.
That's it. 9/28/23 is what we have on that plan.
Okay. And has that been submitted to the board, the board members?
As far as I know, it has.
Okay. Good. Okay. Okay. No, that's fine. We just have to write that down. And that was prepared by you or your office?
My office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. People, Roger, interruption.
It's okay. As I was saying, the loft area or habitable attic gives the home an area for entertainment, play area for some children.
Was there a closet in the previous plan? Has that changed?
I don't remember, to be honest with you. It's... So it wishes us to leave the closet in the loft.
That's the original one?
This is from 19... Eighteen?
I can't see a thing.
I don't know if the original one.
Are these short walls around the staircase in this loft area? Or around the staircase? Or are they all the way?
No. The intent was to use a full wall. However, there's no door or anything at the top of the stair.
But you said they are full walls?
Or at the bottom of the stairs separating it.
Right.
Again, if the board chooses or wishes us to put half walls or railing to open it up more and potentially eliminate the potential uses this as being a bedroom, we would certainly advise it as well.
Are there egress windows up there?
There are windows up there, yes.
Are there egress?
Yes.
Someone will probably use it as a bedroom. It's one of the...
What I'm thinking.
I mean, I don't have an issue with it being used as a bedroom or this being a four-bedroom house, so it's... I don't think it's really an issue. I'm just trying to get clarity on it.
It's not the intent for it to be used as a bedroom, from my understanding.
Okay.
Should create something? Thank you.
I have a question. I'm sorry. Is the first floor plan identifies the house as...
The attic.
Eighteen feet wide? The foundation plan says 18 feet 2 inches.
I'm only asking because of impact.
It looks like the block plan. You're... Eighteen feet wide. Just want to make sure.
Yes.
Because we're going to have a...
Yeah, we would go down to...
So that's an 18?
We would go to the 18 for wide.
Okay.
As opposed to the 18.2, that's the kind of issue. That's hard, doesn't it? Take a look.
Yeah. So that...
That's...
So the whole third floor is new. It wasn't...
It wasn't part of the original.
It wasn't part of the original. This was a two-story house. Now it's a...
Three-story.
Two and a half?
Two and a half. Two and a half, as calculated.
In the attic.
Yeah.
Which is in conformity to the neighborhood as well. On the majority of those ones, they're two and a half to three stories. That's...
But it doesn't have to be a bedroom. It could be anything. It could be...
I'm sorry?
The attic doesn't necessarily have to be a bedroom. It could be anything.
Correct.
It could be a sewing room. It could be a recreation area for kids, whatever.
Correct. Which is what the intent could even be, you know, for storage of... Because again, there's no basement.
Okay.
One question I had, I don't know if this is for you, but was the heat going to be escaping upstairs because now it's partially open? Or you don't have fans up there or returns in reference to the airflow?
I would leave that up to the botanical contractor, but I would assume that we would... You know, there'll be heat and air conditioning up there, yes.
Yeah. The heat's going to rise. Okay. It's going to serve the cost to the tenant or the owner as to keeping the downstairs warm enough because you're going to lose... Because that area is open now, heat is going to go up there.
Right.
Okay. So the location of the vents is important. Also the fans, okay? So, I mean, that's just my concern. How to keep the cost down for what the potential buyer is or the potential tenant is, you know, and not have all the heat go up on the downstairs three.
Yeah.
What's the size of the driveway?
The engineer could testify to that on his psych plan.
Okay. Any further questions regarding the house itself? Donna, in your report, you said that the first floor was narrowed, but the second floor wasn't?
Yeah. Did you just clarify the difference in the width for the areas of the first floor and the second floor?
Yeah. So the first floor is 18 feet. The second floor was 1810. That was actually a miscommunication between ourselves and the engineer, which your experts brought up. So we are going to reduce the second floor to not exceed 850 square feet, which again, the engineer could testify to that. That's true.
So it'll be the same width as the first floor?
Correct.
Okay.
What will be the ultimate width of the second floor?
The 18... 18 feet.
That's going to match the first floor?
Yes.
Okay.
So the sketch you have here, rear elevation, is not correct?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
So where are you taking that out of the second floor?
It'll probably reduce the bedroom width, although I'm going to take a look and see if we can develop the bathroom area, so maybe perhaps over here to widen the width and just make a closet run down, wash your drawers.
Will that also reduce the width of the third floor?
Yes.
So everything's going to be 18 feet?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
What does that do to the overall square footage? Reduce it?
It's going to reduce the overall square footage, and it's also going to reduce the setbacks on the right side of the property.
You're going to increase your setback?
It's going to increase it.
So thereby lessening the severity of the variance?
That's correct.
And for the building coverage?
Yeah.
Correct.
Not by much, but...
But everything else on these small halls.
It's going to have a nominal effect to the positive. You've got to get that. You need to get this on the record so the board understands that.
Okay.
Okay. So it's first, second, and third?
I think the engineer's going to go... The engineer's going to go into more depth than...
Yeah. But he's verifying that, yes, the whole building will only be 18 feet of width.
Right.
All three floors.
Okay. I got it. That's fair enough. Thank you.
But we're not sure how it's going to affect the second floor, whether it comes out of some combination of a hallway or one of the rooms.
Yes.
And what is it, 10 inches?
Correct. Eight?
Well, the floor plan is 18...
Ten.
1810.
And it works at 18 feet.
Right. But he's specifying that the whole building will only be 18 feet wide, not 18.2.
Well, if it works at 18.2, and the board's going to...
I don't know what works. Tell us what you want to build.
I know that the block plan currently has it at 18.2. All right. So what we would do then is we would adhere to the 18-foot-two dimension as the foundation has indicated. We will widen the first floor to 18-foot-two, and we will carry that dimension all the way up through the second and third floor.
All right. I think... I'd like to know exactly what the setbacks are now, are going to be.
They'll probably be...
Sure. Which is still going to have a positive effect on the setbacks, on the lock coverage, and everything else that we previously were talking about, 18.2.
Okay. So what are we talking, eight inches now?
Eight inches on the second floor, yes.
Eight inches?
Yes.
You're adding two inches on the first floor.
Currently represent.
Any further questions for the architect? For Mr. Feldman? Board professionals?
Right. So where are the mechanicals? Is there anything in the attic space?
Yes. The mechanicals are depicted here and here.
So you're going to have an HVAC condenser on the...
Yes. Which I believe is shown on the engineering... The location.
Any further questions for Mr. Feldman? All right. I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the public for Mr. Feldman regarding his testimony? Seeing no one? Thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Thank you. All right, check. Please register right here. Do you solemnly swear affirm your testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes, I do. Will you state your name for the record and spell it for us? Charles Surmont, S-U-R-M-O-N-T-E. You have been previously qualified as a professional engineer, correct? Before the board, you testified? I have, yes. Are you still licensed? I am. And in good standing? I am. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Surmont. So... If you want me to start, I'll start with the first question. The size of the driveway. How big is it?
Okay, yeah.
You'll be doing one curb cut, right?
I'm sorry?
There's got to be a curb cut?
The curb cut's 12 feet wide.
Okay.
The driveway itself is...
Let me get the exact dimension.
It's a little less than eight feet wide. It consists of... It consists of two 30-inch wide strips with a 33-inch island in between. It's about... It's about 7'9" altogether, out to out. If I can just back up a little bit and just tell you what our thought process was when we redeveloped this plan? You might recall that I testified that due to the narrowness of the site and the unsuitability of the soil, that it would be difficult, if not impossible, for us to strictly comply with the enhanced stormwater management requirements that come with a development that introduces over 1,000 square feet.
Yes.
When we realized we were reducing the building down, I strongly suggested that we develop the site in such a manner that we try to stay just below that 1,000 square feet. Now, the driveway affords us two things. It affords us the opportunity to stay below 1,000 square feet, and it provides a location central to the... More central to the site than the two property lines to capture, store, and to the degree that we can, infiltrate some stormwater before it's released out to the road. Because we do intend on collecting the roof drainage, piping it underground, bringing it to the front of the property. And the most appropriate location to store and dispose would be a more central location so as to ensure that we don't have any negative impacts on the crawl spaces of the neighboring homes.
We appreciate that.
So those... So we were able to do that. But I do... I take responsibility for this snafu with the building coverage. I based my calculations on the first floor area of 845 square feet as opposed to the... I didn't catch the second floor overhang that introduced an additional 20 feet of square footage. Holding the 18-foot-two width, we are able to stay below 1,000 square feet. But again, we, you know, we're doing what we can do to minimize the impacts of stormwater.
So this becomes a minor development? Is that what you're...
Yes. We'd like to... We'd like it to be viewed as a minor development rather than a major development? Or whatever the terminology is.
Maybe Doug can explain.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the threshold, so there's two, we'll call them three branches of stormwater management. There's major development, which is the one acre of disturbance, quarter acre of new impervious. Um, we're not there. Minor development in Asbury, right, specific to Asbury Park, um, is thousand foot of new impervious surface or five thousand square feet of land disturbance. What Chet is testifying is that they are under those thresholds. So it wouldn't be a minor development either. Um, so the final branch would just be to ensure that post-development runoff rates don't exceed pre-development runoff rates to adjacent properties, which with the implementing of a roof leader collection system, which Chet has already shared with me of the plan, I took a look at it before the meeting, um, that would satisfy that that portion of the stormwater management requirement.
Great. Sounds good.
And I mean, that's the main that that it's the main revision to my site plan would be the driveway, the size of the house, and the implementation of the drainage.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Surmonte?
So what are the signed setbacks now that we're we're using eighteen two?
Well, it'll still be three foot two inches on the left, three
Okay.
Three foot one inch on the left, about three foot nine inches on the right.
Okay. And building coverage?
Building coverage. Building coverage will not exceed to stay under the thousand square feet. I have a I have about eight hundred and forty-eight. So right now, the footprint is eight hundred and forty-five square feet and that just works with a few square feet of breathing room. I don't wanna cut it right to the number, so eight hundred and forty-five square feet will be the building coverage, which will be the eighteen foot two wide version of Mr. Felton's house that he spoke to earlier.
Okay.
Unless in dealing with the architect, well, again, that'll affect the setbacks. If you wanna, you know, we couldn't decide if we were gonna take a foot out of the back of the house, take away the overhang on the right, or do a little combination of the two, but we'll uh
What are you? Well, we need to know. You're being a little ambiguous, Mr. Surmonte.
No, he's already testified that there's no
He's already testified that there's no overhang.
So the houses are made, make the house, the dimensions that the architect spoke about.
Yeah.
How that will relate to
And now we can, and it will, eighteen foot two, if you'd like, we can move the building over three or four inches and get and get three foot four inches on each side instead of being tight to the left side if that's more pleasing.
No, we're presenting it at eighteen point two and it's under a thousand square feet.
That's correct. But just as far as the setbacks go, we can go three foot four inches on each side rather than three foot one, three foot nine.
Donna, do you? I wanna get back to the building coverage.
Sure.
So I'm sorry, what did you say is the footprint, square footage?
Eight hundred and forty-five square feet.
Eight forty-five?
Yes.
Okay. So that's gonna be a forty-five percent building coverage?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify that.
That's what I was trying to get at, yes, thank you.
Whether we wanna shift so that it's centered on the lot or more to one side or the other. It's up to you guys.
Any further questions for Mr. Surmonte?
Do you are you recommending any kind of, so for the ribbon driveway?
Yeah.
The grass iron piece, is there, it's just gonna be lawn or are you recommending like a grass tree just in case we get a little off the pads?
I was I was just gonna propose to leave it at lawn just so that it just so that it as much as much greenery in the front yard as possible rather than having a eight foot wide what appears to be an eight foot wide driveway. I just thought it would might look better if we put lawn in. And thirty inches is, you know, an adequate width for the ribbon strips.
Surface would the driveway be? Would you use in concrete?
Concrete, yes.
I think you're gonna use pipe or hole underneath the front of the house, out to the sidewalk, on the curb, right? You say you wanna pipe the wall around?
Just a little louder, Mike, you're hearing a shot.
Roof leaders under the front?
Under the front.
Roof leader's gonna come down the side of the house, come across the front of the house and discharge into a stone trench underneath the grass strip between the between the driveway strips.
Okay. Good enough, thank you. Is there a path from the front door to the
Driveway.
I don't know that there's a sidewalk, is there?
Yes. Yeah, we have a we have a we have one step down to a three foot walkway to the driveway.
Okay.
Which is basically where the cars, there's no you know, that's where the tires are, there's no little
Right.
gap where you can actually walk into the car without being in the ground.
For the stormwater, do we need to make that part of the resolution or are you okay with with the testimony?
I think it should be, yes.
Okay, it should be. Any further questions for Mr. Surmonte? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Surmonte.
Thank you.
We have one more professional, but before he comes, I wanna admit into evidence the third notice that I gave to the neighboring property owner to fulfill the requirement of offering the property to
Okay.
uh, neighboring properties.
This is this is the rear?
This is the rear and you've already given us the two sides. And we've I've already given you left and right side.
That's fine, okay.
Okay, so I think we're on exhibit six?
Yes.
So exhibit six is a letter from me to the property in the rear. That's two oh eight Elizabeth Avenue and it's addressed to SNS Properties LLC dated August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
What does it say?
It's an offer to sell this property or purchase the neighboring lot. You want me to read the whole letter?
No, I just need to know that you covered the basis.
Okay. Um, it's an offer to sell our lot at fair market value. See if the neighbor is interested in doing that or selling their property to us and we're indicating that we intend on using this in order to establish our hardship.
Okay, fair enough. And what if any response that you received in that letter?
None.
Okay.
Did you receive any responses from any of the neighbors, Mr. Cromer, or no?
Yes, we received a response seven months ago, but haven't heard anything since. So we look at it as abandoned and we don't believe anybody is here.
You don't have to get into too much of it, but what was the sum and substance of the response? Buy yours or sell theirs?
They were showing some interest in buying, uh, but it didn't go anywhere.
Okay. And then they they offered you a price?
They offered a price less than the assessed value.
Okay. Okay. Now which side of that, which property was that, to the right or the left facing the property?
One minute, please. It was to the right. Um, and also I overheard the board attorney speaking. Also attached as exhibit six are the certified mail receipt and the return receipt indicating that the letter was received.
Okay.
Sure.
This is just a curiosity, it's nothing to do with
Not a problem.
Okay, fair enough. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Cromer.
Yeah, we'll give it back to Marie. Jim, please raise your hand. Tom Swerf firm, testimony about giving this hearing, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name for the record and spell it.
James W. Higgins, H I G G I N S. And for the rec, excuse me, for the record, I am a licensed planner in the state. I've been licensed for approximately forty-five years. My license is current and I have testified before this board on a number of occasions as well as numerous boards throughout the state.
We accept your potential, Mr. Higgins, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know why I'm still doing this, you know.
The same reason I am.
Okay. Your words.
Okay, could you, did you review this application?
Yes, I did. I reviewed the application. I reviewed the reports from the board's professionals. I have visited the site on a number of occasions. I'm very familiar with the area of the site.
Have you considered the planning perspectives of this application?
Yes, I have. It's in, as I say, this is a classic hardship case where due to the size of the site, the width of the site, the area of the site, and actually the depth of the site, it's impossible for anybody to construct a residence on this site without variances. When I say that, the variances that are necessary are, first of all, the minimum side yard setback for one side and a minimum side yard setback for both sides. Six feet's required for one side, twelve feet combination for both sides. In addition, the ordinance requires that the minimum width of the building be twenty feet. When you have a twenty-five foot wide lot and you require twelve feet combined side yard setbacks, clearly you can't put a twenty foot wide building on it. So there's no way a building could be constructed on this lot without some sort of variance. The area within which the site's located, there are a lot of twenty-five foot wide lots. The two properties to the north of the subject site are identical in width and area and depth to the subject site. The property to the median south of the site is twenty-five feet wide, also it's deeper though, I think it's a through lot. So what's being, what is, the site is consistent with the character of the area. There's other lots, there are some other lots also that are similar in area to the site. Um, the applicant's proposing a building that, in my opinion, fits in with the character of the area, fits in with the scale of the site. The eighteen foot wide building with either it's eighteen foot or eighteen two, whether you have three point four feet on either side or three point five feet on either side. It's that it's the best you can do on this site. Anything narrower than that is a very difficult house to to live in. If you conform to the side yard setbacks, you'd have an eleven foot wide building and that that would be, quite frankly, look like a railroad car on the site and it would be probably non-functional. So what's being proposed here is the best that I can see for the site. Um, when you look at the zone, the zone requires five thousand square foot lots. If you have the minimum fifty foot lot width, the minimum depth you can have to have a conforming lot is a hundred feet. And while your ordinance doesn't have a minimum depth requirement in the zone, it stands to reason that the ordinance would anticipate at least a hundred foot deep lot. So you've got a seventy-five foot deep lot, it's seventy-five percent of what you would expect in the zone. You've got a twenty-five foot wide lot, which is fifty percent of what the ordinance permits. And the area of the lot at eighteen thousand seventy-five square feet is thirty-seven point five percent of what is in the zone. So clearly, it's a substantially undersized lot.
Eighteen hundred versus?
Eight one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five.
You said eighteen thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's eighteen thousand.
Just wanna make sure for the record.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That's good. So there's a minimum front yard setback variance, eighteen feet is is proposed and the ordinance requires twenty-five feet. So there's a seven foot difference. And it's important, the eighteen feet is important because you have a three-bedroom house, the residential site improvement standards require two parking spaces for a three-bedroom house and allows that two parking spaces to be included in a garage as well as a driveway that is at least eighteen feet deep. So the eighteen foot setback in the front yard, I think, is appropriate for the for the for the site and is necessary in order to have the adequate parking on the site to meet the residential site improvement standards. The lot coverage that's being requested is forty-five percent and that gives you a building of a footprint of eight hundred and forty-five feet. If you had a fully conforming lot, the footprint could be one thousand five hundred feet, square feet. So again, what's being proposed here is a little bit more than half what could be put on a conforming lot. And the reason I'm bringing that up is one of the standards as far as a hardship variance is whether or not the site, the site can be utilized as it would otherwise be utilized as it were a conforming lot. And clearly, here, a fifteen hundred square foot building wouldn't be appropriate even though on a conforming lot you could put that. But an eight hundred and forty-five square foot building, which has a lot coverage of forty-five percent, is appropriate in my opinion. So when I look at the variances that are required, uh, I think that because of the significantly undersized nature of the lot, the character of the area within which the site is located and the the fact that the the building is consistent with, is in scale with the lot and consistent with the scale of the surrounding neighborhood, I think that the application can be approved. I think there's a substantial hardship and I don't see a substantial negative impact.
Does that complete your testimony, Mr. Higgins? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Higgins? Board professionals, any questions? Anyone in the public for Mr. Higgins' testimony? Seeing none, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Cromer, back to you.
I don't have any any comments. I think you did a great job of summarizing why the house fits this particular property and we ask that the board approve the application.
So before we get there, I'm gonna open it up for comment by the general public. Anyone in the public who would like to make a comment in favor, either in favor or against this application? Seeing none? Then we move on to deliberation and voting. So, anyone on the board want to have any comments themselves?
I appreciate you listening to the board last time you were here and making changes and I appreciate all your professionals coming here tonight and explaining those changes to us. And I think at the end, it's a better application than it was.
I also took note of what you said. Uh, if the board will approve it, one of the conditions of approval will be the insertion of the stormwater restriction scheme, downspouts, underground, out to the street.
Also, that the entire building structure will be eighteen feet two inches as opposed to
Yeah, revised plans.
Right.
And the centering of it will be left to the applicant or do we have an opinion?
I have no opinion in regards to that.
Yeah, they they, don't just leave it to them. If it's in the plan at whatever distance and you don't ask to change it, then that's what it should be. So it's consistent with the plans.
Okay. Were there any other conditions that were listed, Jack?
No, that I, excuse me for one second. No, not that I have. Those are the two primaries. The usual, you gotta publish, you gotta do all that. There's some boilerplate conditions that are in every
So I'll make a comment and say, Mr. Higgins, we understand that this is a hardship situation, but in order to build at all on this property, it would require variances.
Yeah.
So we well understand that.
Yeah, the only other thing I would add, I'll point to you from a legal perspective. Uh, applicant did what it's expected to do under the land use law to either offer it to somebody else, try and make their property more conforming or try and get other property to make theirs more conforming. No, it didn't really go anyplace. They fulfilled their case law obligation, so that this is what we're like.
Thank you, Jack. So I'll make a motion to adopt two eleven DeWitt Avenue with the conditions stated?
I'll second it.
And that was Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully?
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cromer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll second it. Happy birthday, Russell.
Thank you. Yeah, happy birthday.